All this workshop to order at 4:00 PM on January 14th. We'd like to welcome everyone to our very first board meeting for 2025. Happy New Year. Seeing all of your beautiful faces, you are the joy of our meetings when you come here and sing for us. So, thank you for being here. It really is a special moment in our day. Before we get started, Tina, would you like to do the roll call?
Absolutely. Mrs. Partisani.
Here.
Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Forehand.
Here.
Mr. Bragman.
Here.
Our next order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries five nothing. Now, we get to the wonderful part where we get to hear all about Oak. So, Mrs. Reed, would you like to introduce our guests?
Thank you so much, President Davidson. It really is an honor and a privilege every board meeting when we get to be visited by a school site. But tonight's extra important and special as we have our Lions with us from Oak Middle School. And I'd like to welcome to the podium esteemed principal, Mrs. Evelyn Garcia.
Happy New Year and good afternoon, President Davidson, esteemed members of the school board. A warm welcome to our two new board members, Mrs. Partisani and Mr. Bragman. Welcome. It is a joy to be here in front of both of you for the first time tonight. Superintendent Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, and to our amazing Oak family and community, welcome all. I'd like to start by welcoming Anya Majid, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anya? Please stand. Face the flag. Remove any head coverings not associated with a uniform. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would all please remain standing as I welcome Mr. Vince O'Connell and our Oak Choir to lead us in the National Anthem. Our choir, if you could please stay standing. Thank you so much.
Before we get this wonderful picture done, the Board of Education has the highest honor for Mr. O'Connell for being an unbelievable. Your medal says, "Thank you for being a leader."
Wonderful, thank you. And I would like to invite everyone to please take a seat. Oh, absolutely. If any parents would like to take a picture, please feel free. Now's a good time. We always make sure to share these photos, so we will definitely do so today as well. Thank you so much, choir. You were phenomenal. I stand before you today as Oak's principal. It is such a privilege and an honor that I never take for granted. It is an honor that resonates deeply with me, not just as an educator and an Oak mom, but also as a part of our school community, which I call my family. To the board, Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, Steven, my amazing Assistant Principal, our Oak's amazing admin team, as well as our staff and teaching team, my hats off. It means the world to me to be able to work alongside you every day. To our partners at McAleff, thank you. Our partnership and daily communication means the world. Jen and Eddie, you are both a dream to work with. Thank you. Here at Los Alamos Oak, we are not just colleagues, we are truly family. This sense of community and care is what distinguishes Los Alamos from anywhere else on earth. I've worked in other places, and the spirit of support and unity is truly what makes Oak special. Our campus is a vibrant place where energy is in all places. We are a school where kids come, they feel comfortable, and we are always advocating for them to feel like they belong. That is really our most important role this year, is to find a sense of connection and belonging for every Oak Lion. Every day, we strive to create an environment where students feel safe, physically, but also emotionally. Social, emotional health and support has been also another priority for us. Our commitment to nurturing a culture of inclusivity ensures that Oak isn't just a place for learning, it's a place where growth and belonging really do go hand in hand. To share these experiences from a student's lens, I would like to invite our amazing two student leaders, Anya Majid and Kinsey Perry.
Good afternoon, board, President Davidson, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, and all our Oak family. We are the representatives of Oak Leadership. My name is Anya Majid, and this is Kinsey Perry. Our mission in leadership is to foster greater connection and community on our Oak campus, making it a welcoming place for all.
To accomplish our goal, we have hosted multiple Spirit Weeks and special events this year. During Peace Week, we created a poster that featured a unique fish designed by each student to symbolize that we all may be different fish, but still swim together in the same school. During this week, we also held our annual Staff vs. Students Kickball Game, where the staff still remains undefeated. But since we all had fun, we are all winners.
During our Password Ribbon Week, we hosted a door decorating contest, each door featuring a creative anti-drug message. Second-period classes worked together to craft doors like, "Oh snap, we won't add drugs to our story," or "Don't get wrapped up in drugs." We also organized our second annual Halloween carnival, where students came together for a pie walk, mummy bowling, and even a pumpkin decorating contest.
Oak staff even held their own underground Spirit Week before Thanksgiving break, where they dressed up in flannels, hats, and comfy clothes. But we caught on really fast. They even let us join them in the USC vs. UCLA Dress-Up Days and compete in a Staff vs. Student Football Toss Relay. Just before break, we put on our winter wear week with activities and dress-up days. This week ended in our After-School Frosty Fest with over 300 students attending, coupled with a snow machine, DJ, frozen lemonade, a glitter tattooed artist, and a photo booth. We aren't finished yet, as Kindness Week and Ability Awareness Week are just around the corner.
Fostering a compassionate campus is integral to our work in leadership. Last semester, we ran two service projects. We collected post-Halloween candy for Treats for Troops, donating almost 70 pounds. We also created a campus-wide food drive to benefit CASA Youth Shelter. It just shows how much our Oak Lions care about our community. This semester, we have already begun a penny wars competition, with the proceeds benefiting those impacted by the local fires. Moreover, we also partner with our WellSpace to bring wellness themes to Oak each month. We assisted them with our Unity Day activity to promote inclusivity and acceptance. Finally, we celebrate Heritage Month so that students can feel more about diverse backgrounds. Last semester, we hosted a very successful showing of Coco in celebration of Dia de los Muertos for Hispanic Heritage Month. And next week, we will have an activity for students to reflect on the significance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Our leadership is always here to assist in other campus events, whether it's helping for Veterans Day by assisting our veteran guests or making college posters for College Bear Wednesdays. Focusing on connection, we run a sixth-grade leadership club as a way to include our incoming sixth graders to our Oak community. Additionally, we create engaging announcement videos each week and recognize students, staff, and clubs to show off all our amazing Oak Lions.
While being in leadership, we do various projects and activities that help us grow as personal leaders. Every month, we learn about a new character trait and skill, such as integrity, communication, service, and problem solving. And then, we reflect on how we incorporate them into our lives in and out of Oak. Recently, we were assigned to complete one hour of service on campus, helping a staff member. We learned the importance of being in service to others as a leader. We also learned about fundraising through our first-ever student store and how to be a better teammate through team bonding activities.
Personally, I join leadership to help make Oak a better place and to grow in new skills such as communication, confidence, and creativity. I appreciate the opportunity to create connections, as well as inspire and motivate other Oak Lions to be the best they can be and enhance their new middle school experience.
As my time at Oak is ending, being a campus leader for the past two years has significantly shaped me to the person I am. Leadership is not just a class, it is an experience. I've learned how to work efficiently, there is no limit to creativity, and the power of making others smile. I leave knowing I've made a difference on our campus and in our community and will help to make others feel more connected to our school. I will continue to bring these with me to the Los Alamos High School next year.
Thank you for listening, and as always, hear us roar!
Girls, you make us so proud. Thank you. This is just a reflection that two of our students got to present. But if we could please give a round of applause to Ms. Sigmund and our entire leadership team that's here today. They're truly the ones that make it all happen. Their creativity is truly unbelievable. Oak's admin team, Steven, Jerelyn, Adrian, thank you. It is a blessing to work with a team that is so student-centered. Everything is about each individual child, every day, always. But my favorite part about our team is that, just like me, they like to have a ton of fun. So, that's what you can see in the picture right next to us. Fun, we have found, not only allows for us to enjoy each other, work, long hours, but it also allows for us to make connections, connections that last a lifetime with students. Those connections actually help us drive them, lead them, and help them grow to reach their max potential. This year, we used that fun for our fundraiser. So, our PTA and our Oak team, including staff, as well as our admin team, said we would take on this fundraiser and make it in-house, on our own. And we did, and we did a phenomenal job. We raised $82,000, where every penny stays with us. So, I couldn't be prouder of that, and it would have never been possible without the support of each and every one of our team members. That includes families, our teachers, our custodians, our cafeteria staff, and of course, the admin team. Our teachers like to have fun, too. Not only do they have fun, but they are innovators. That is the word that I think of when I think of the Oak team. They're in the front of all-newness, and they bring it, and they bring it with joy, and they bring it with excitement, and they bring it for our kids. At Oak, our classroom, they're all vibrant hubs where exploration and excitement really take place. From engaging labs in every single science class, to we held the very first Battle Bot Competition in the nation at Oak Middle School last spring. It's something that we are so very proud of. To all of our enrichment that happens through instrumental and vocal music, as well as every single elective that we have. Our phenomenal staff doesn't stop in the classrooms teaching. Each member is dedicated to fostering excellence. Our custodial team and our kitchen staff that is taking part in scratch cooking. That is where they are thinking of innovative recipes to bring to our kids that they create and make in-house. This is just a small example on how it takes a village, and every single member of our team is what creates the Oak family. Our teachers create learning environments that are second to none. They nurture spaces that encourage communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, skills that are essential for future success. We know that we are preparing adults every single day. So, when we see our kiddos come to Oak, we treat them individually, and we always think, where do we want to see them? And where do we want them to be when they remember us? How will they remember us? The impact that we make on them, the kindness that we show them, is what we hope that they take into the future and what they give our community and our world. We try to make school enjoyable. Kids really are here to, of course, learn, but also to connect and to grow and to learn grace and kindness. Through an Aspiring Leaders Project, thank you for that program, Oak is bringing back Watch Oak Teach. This is a collaborative opportunity that really does allow for teachers to see best practices within themselves and each other, and bring them back to their classrooms, things that are tangible and that you can put into place the following day. Every day, Lions are engaged in rigorous instruction, and I love looking at it through our walkthroughs. I welcome anyone to walk through Oak if you ever want to get inspired to do better, because every day in our classes, we see better and better. Our drive for excellence is also seen through data. So, although data is only one measure of success, it really is important. And I want to take a moment to really applaud all of those components, our parents, our staff, our teachers, for the increase in all areas of our data. We are so proud to see data continue to grow. This year, we want to thank Ed Services for the new benchmark. MAPS benchmarks are really giving us a ton of valuable information that is allowing us to do so many different things. From planning instruction to also looking at intervention that can take place. In the coming weeks, we are putting in place a math intervention, because although our data is looking better in math, that is an area that we want to respond to. And so, we are excited to focus on allowing every child to meet or exceed standard. We believe that it can happen, and we know that it will. Our focus remains on fostering an academic environment, but that's not where we stand or stay. We want to also focus and continue to work on the well-being and the mental health of each and every Lion. And so, we have utilized our different partnerships with our Stanford Challenge Success, as well as No Place for Hate, to create opportunities for kids to really focus on what matters to them socially, emotionally. Students also continue to use our WellSpace, whether it's for individual counseling or Mindful Activities Weekly. Our team examines student stressors that impact our students and their everyday life. And one of the ways that we do that is through Shadow Days. We will be having two Shadow Days coming up in the next month that allow our staff to walk in the shoes of our students and really experience their day from beginning to end. That helps us understand how we can make things better. That's where nutrition came from. And so, we all love nutrition, kids and adults included. And so, we always want to take something new and make it better. Something that helps with mental health is connection. We know that. And so, at Oak, we are dedicated to offering meaningful connections and providing opportunities to ignite passions and to find new passions that can last a lifetime for kids. Outside of the classroom, we strive to connect with their interests and their goals through various enrichment opportunities and through also opportunities to highlight kiddos. Our visual and performing arts and all of our electives are a cornerstone of creativity that allow kids to find ways in which they can show who they are. We also have over 30 student-led and centered clubs. That includes the Model United Nations Club, that is a partnership with Los Alamos High School students as we are preparing future Griffins at Oak. These initiatives ensure that Lions find a place where they belong, grow, and can thrive. Facilities at Oak. If you drive by or step foot on our campus, we can't deny Oak is beautiful. It is an amazing place where magic happens, but definitely the facilities are great. So, thank you so much to it. Innovative board that makes that a priority. This year, due to rain, or last year, I should say, due to rain, the floor in our gym was ruined. And the rainbow after that is a beautiful, brand-new floor that is now a showcase and a place for all of our Lions to enjoy. I also want to take the time to thank our partners at Leif. A huge, huge thank you. They provided $25,000 for our NPR in order to upgrade the lights and the projector. And so, I am so grateful for that. As I've said a few times during the presentation, belonging is key for students, especially in such a tender developmental state. Middle school is not always easy, and we make it easier by allowing kids to know that when they step foot on Oak, that is their home. We are their family. And so, this year, Mr. Segura, Mrs. Lavash, and myself hosted a lesson, "The Power of Belonging." We went into each and every one of our social science classrooms and led a lesson about how important it is to contribute positively in allowing yourself and your peers to know that they belong when they're at Oak. Using tools from both Challenge Success, as well as No Place for Hate, we hosted lessons and allowed students to make a personal pledge that we will circle back around in order to really encourage every student to know that they too can contribute to the well-being of themselves and their peers. Collaboration aims to support social, emotional well-being, because we know that that's what leads to academic success. So, parent and community involvement. We love our parents, we love our community, we wouldn't be where we are without you all. So, thank you so much. As we move forward together, let us continue to build this foundation of unity and support, fostering an environment where every student feels valued and seen. Our community is everything to me. I will work endlessly to ensure that kids at Oak are safe in every sense of the word. For our amazing PTA, our kids, our staff, our innovative Board of Education, Dr. Pulver, our district administrators and beyond, Los Alamos Unified does amazing things for kids, and Oak is such an example of that. We value and foster involvement through social media, a weekly newsletter, and opportunities to visit our site. I want to thank everyone again and again and again, as I do daily when I stop and think and reflect, for the opportunity and the privilege that you give me every day to serve this amazing community. Thank you.
Anya, Kinsey, come here. The Board of Education thought, I know they all thought, that you did an awesome job. I agree. The Board of Education also notes that...
They did so well. I'm so proud.
Also notes that it's leadership that makes a difference. So, you have earned your, you make a difference.
I appreciate you.
Sorry. You are such important examples of what it means to be a great leader, a leader who cares about the other people around them and knows how to be a fine example. So, thank you so much. What you shared just is an exemplary projection of what goes on on your campus every day. You are just such a perfect joy. You sparkle, but you also have an incredible inner strength. And I think that that strength is what allows you to create such a diverse climate where you celebrate joy, but at the same time ask for rigor and ask for more from your students and your staff. The staff's amazing. You go in the classroom, learning is joyful. Learning is something that challenges, but makes kids want to share and collaborate and move forward. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, it was outstanding. Other board members? Mrs. Hill?
Thank you. I just want to say to leadership and ASB, one of the things I heard you talk about was how it builds your confidence. And you might not even realize that at your young age, but I'm telling you that the things that you do, the way that you collaborate, the ability to get up and stand up and talk to this room, to these really scary people, because they're really scary, I'm telling you, is just amazing. And that confidence is what will lead you to so many other things in your life. And so, I really appreciate that you recognize that. Maybe not fully, but you recognize that, and you guys are just doing an amazing job. And I adore the T-shirts. Those are just way too cute. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Bragman?
I know the amount of times I've driven by your campus and seen Oak pride, and I just could not be more flattered to be a part of this community and to see you all as a pride, as a family. The one common theme I heard, especially early in the presentation, was about celebrating difference, but also being unified and being a family. And that's what a pride is. So, I know middle school is hard. It's a difficult time for you as students, parents. I know it can be difficult for you also. But being able to persevere and unite as one team and one family and one pride, you've got great leadership. I hope you all, as students, appreciate your teachers, from choir to your history and leadership, to every single subject. But I just could not be more thankful to have heard the most beautiful National Anthem and to hear the most amazing fundraisers, from CASA to the fires, being responsive to the needs of our community. Keep up the good work. You're going to be world changers if you aren't already, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Partisani?
Okay. Well, how lucky are we that we got to start this meeting with such beautiful performance and beautiful voices? Thank you. I hope all meetings start out this way. I also wanted to just congratulate the leadership, really, because I think it does start from the top and the tone that you set. And what I heard throughout your presentation was around, used words around inclusivity, kindness, belonging, and I think you need those. Those are the magic sort of secret sauce to then building a culture for learning, for innovation, for creating the future leaders. So, I'm thankful to you, thankful to you guys for being here today, and it was wonderful. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Forehand?
Yes, you have a lot to roar about, but this is one grandparent who has a lot to roar about, too, because you have taken grandson number one and been kind and very, made him as successful as he can be at this point. Now, get ready, grandson number two is transitioning from a Leo to a Lion next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, the students started off, "Hear us roar." And I think that came in loud and clear throughout the presentation, whether it was through our show choir, our amazing students who presented to us tonight to just share all the wonderful activities and really the differences that our students can make. It's been a common theme both last, in December, and it will be tonight as well when I talk about in my superintendent's report, about the giving nature and the service nature of our students to this community. And I think there's so many wonderful examples that you exemplify. But I also love, you know, one of the things I know is leadership really does matter. And it's always inspiring to me to see exceptional leaders who really always give their credit back. back to their staff and to their students. So, exceptional job, Mrs. Garcia. I couldn't agree more. I think two... A few words that really rang out to me is the vibrancy that occurs with on the Oak campus. It really is a vibrant and passionate and caring culture. And then when you talked about just the innovation of your teachers and of your staff, I think Oak exemplifies always this drive to do right for students, but what can we do to get better, to continue to find ways to innovate. And then really just the ongoing... There are so many ways for our students to get connected and to feel belonged to one another, to adults. We know that there's such differences that can make in the lives of students when they are really cared for, that they are connected to a caring, capable individual and adult, whether it be to Thirty Clubs, whether it be our ASB, show choir, drama, so many different ways outside of the academics. And academics also really connects kids together as well. And so, it's just really inspiring to see such a thriving, vibrant middle school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our only disappointment is that you only sing one song. We wouldn't have minded a concert, but thank you so much. Mrs. Reed, would you like to honor us with the next special presentation?
Absolutely. Mrs. Garcia will remain at the podium, and she has a very special announcement of an annual award that each school site gets to announce to the community, which is the Hero of the Heart.
I really wanted this to be a surprise, but a little birdie told me that she already knows. But I would love to invite Mrs. Melissa Newman up to the podium with me, please. I have worked with Melissa for many, many years now. We transitioned together from Hopkinson. I left her there for a year without me, but then I got her right back. Mrs. Newman, I tried very hard to surprise her because she loves surprises, but in speaking to her son Evan, she already knew. He's like, "Sorry to break it to you, Ms. Garcia, but she already knows." I said, "Oh, well, I still cannot wait to honor you." Melissa, you are a joy and just such an inspiration as a mother. And so, you're many, many things. You're a wife, you're a volunteer, you're an amazing professional, but really what sets you apart is your passion as a mom, and it is inspiring. It's inspiring to me as a mother as well and as an educator, how you fight for your children in the most loving and amazing way, and it's by giving back. And so, everything you do, you do it for your two beautiful babies, and I just want to say that it's noticed and so, so very appreciated. I'm going to go ahead and read this because I don't want to leave anything unsaid, but "A true hero is someone who gives of their time, of their talents, and of their hearts to uplift others. Melissa Newman exemplifies this and more. Melissa's unwavering dedication and genuine care for our school community shine in everything she does, making her an invaluable member of our Oak family. Melissa brought back Lion Pride Awards to in person. Everyone, everyone was so afraid. Oh, but it's another this and that." And she's like, "No problem, I'll do it. Do you need a committee? No, I can do it by myself." And she did. She puts on monthly Lion Pride Awards all by herself, with the help of her son Evan, who's here today, but she does it with a smile and makes it look so effortless. As a dedicated member of our PTA, she approaches every challenge with a positive attitude and a commitment to getting to yes. Whether it's organizing teacher appreciation days, assisting with school events, stepping in for every committee that needs her, Melissa's contributions are done with such ease and grace that she makes it look effortless, which really helps our community keep getting more volunteers, because she makes it look so easy. Then they come back and they're like, "Wow, it wasn't that easy." It's Melissa's touch. Beyond her contributions to the Oak community, she is an amazing wife and mother. Her children and husband are truly fortunate to have someone so gracious, loving, and devoted in their corner. Melissa advocates for her family with an unmatched love and dedication and does it in such a graceful and kind way. She brings the same energy to our school as she advocates for every Oak Lion. Melissa is a doer, a leader, and a shining example of what it means to serve selflessly. Her kindness, determination, and unwavering support really uplifts everyone around her. It is an honor and a privilege to present this award to you, Melissa. You are the hero of our heart. Your dedication to our school and your efforts to create a warm and supportive environment for all kids to feel that they belong is truly valuable. Thank you for all you do. We love you. You got your medal.
That's what I was waiting for.
I know you were waiting for it, and on behalf of the board, you make a difference totally for all of you.
Thank you so much. I truly am honored. I like to be behind the scenes, so this is horrifying for me. But I'm always happy to help our Oak Lions and Principal Garcia, and I'm just glad that I am of use to this team and community. So, thank you.
Melissa, Melissa, would you like to introduce your family? Your husband kind of snuck off there.
I'm sure he did. So, this is Mila Newman. She is a Hopkinson Husky in the fourth grade, Evan Newman in the seventh grade, and my husband, Scott.
Looking around at the audience, I could see lots of smiling faces, which is an indication of admiration and respect.
I'll never shy away from being able to speak about our amazing parents. Thank you so much, Melissa. Mrs. Garcia, you've got to be thanking yourselves right now that I just heard that she has a seventh grader and a... Was that a fourth grader at Hopkinson?
A fourth grader.
So, you're set for a while at Oak Middle School.
That's why I got the award.
Right. It's reinforcement, positive reinforcement, right? You know, it's interesting, last night at our parent information night for our incoming kindergarters and UTK families, one of the things we really talked about was the amazing partnerships that our parents and our families make on behalf of our students each and every single day. And Melissa, I think you just really exemplify that. And so, it's such a prestigious award. You probably heard earlier, Mrs. Reed, talk about the school and gets to recognize one individual. And it's really a selfless labor of love that you are providing to all of our Oak Lions, and I just want to thank you on behalf of the entire district. And that what this recognition is about is the hero of the award. And then the other major accolade that you get with this that kind of keeps on giving is, you know, you'll see Mrs. Sigmund and a few other maybe teachers who are wearing this like blue jacket that they have to earn, and it becomes a really popular thing amongst our teachers to how to be able to earn that jacket. Well, our Heroes of the Heart get a black jacket, and there's only a few. There's only one from every school each year. So, we'll, at the break, we'll make sure we can get your size, try it on with a few samples, and that will be your wearable trophy that you'll be able to wear for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. It was a wonderful presentation. We're going to take pictures now, so good news, though, there are cookies out in the foyer for you. Mrs. Pichardo, did you already get a picture of the choir?
We did get choir, so we'll take the student reps.
You can go forth and get a cookie.
And then, let's get our two student reps, and then all of ASB. Oak staff, don't leave. We'd love to get a picture with Oak staff, and then obviously Melissa Newman and your family.
[inaudible][1144.58]
We are now returning from recess, and since we have no public comments, we will be going into closed session and returning at 6:00 PM for our board meeting. Thank you.